I will call the Monday, April 6, 2020 Oakwood City Council meeting to order. Would you please rise and join me with the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please, Mr. Law Director?
Yes, Mayor Duncan?
Here.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Mrs. Hilton?
Here.
And Mr. Epley?
Here.
Thank you. Good evening. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, we have modified our meeting format. As you can see, our five members of Oakwood City Council are present at City Hall, but we are respecting and adhering to social distancing guidelines. We have the option under our administrative code to appear by video or audio teleconference, which we may need to do for future meetings, but council intends to participate in person as long as we can do so safely. We have limited the meeting to essential attendees only. This includes the five members of council, the city manager, and our law director, who is also acting as our clerk of council. Laurie, if you're watching, we miss you.
Yes.
We have streamlined the agenda to include essential business only. Council meetings are public meetings, and it is important that our residents be able to see their elected officials and know what their government is doing. The meeting this evening is physically closed to the public, but is being broadcast live on television and livestreamed on our City of Oakwood website and the Miami Valley Communications Council website. Normally, our meeting agenda includes time for visitors to address council about any issues on their minds. We will not be doing this tonight since no visitors are physically present, but it is important for our residents to know that the council is always available to hear their concerns. For those watching the meeting, email and telephone contact information for council is being scrolled at the bottom of your TV or computer screen. It is also on our city website at oakwoodohio.gov. Council is always open to hearing resident concerns, and we encourage you to contact us at any time. This pandemic may be changing our procedures, but we will not let it interfere with our responsiveness to citizen concerns. Before we move forward with tonight's agenda, I would like council to address a piece of legislation to approve this modified meeting format. I have a resolution declaring a state of emergency for the city of Oakwood and providing for certain emergency procedures necessary for the continued governance of the city during the current state of national emergency. The COVID-19 pandemic has resulted in states of emergency being declared at the federal and state levels. This resolution will do the same for the city of Oakwood and provides for the continued operation of city government during the emergency. The resolution accomplishes three main goals. First, the resolution provides for a modified council meeting format and provides a process for council to ratify action in the event that we cannot have a quorum present for a public meeting. Second, it invokes emergency provisions of our purchasing ordinance, allowing the city manager to make emergency purchases without formal competitive bidding, if needed. Finally, it authorizes the city manager to implement emergency leave as mandated by the federal government and the state of Ohio. This resolution requires a fourth, fifth vote to approve, and this resolution will expire upon the expiration of the state of Ohio emergency declaration declared by Governor Michael D. Wine. So I move that council adopt this resolution. I would ask for a second.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? If not, Mr. Jacks, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Yes.
Thank you. I would now ask for a report on the minutes of our March 2 regular session, work session, and executive session. Councilmember Hilton?
Yes, Your Honor, I've reviewed the minutes from all three of those meetings, and I've found them to be correct and complete, and therefore I move that they be adopted as written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. So ordered. Under status reports, I have three proclamations. However, in the interest of time, we will not read those out loud, but we will post them verbatim in our city website. One is a proclamation recognizing April as Fair Housing Month. The second is a proclamation recognizing the week of April 20th as Arbor Week, and then third, a proclamation recognizing May as Motorcycle Awareness Month. So I thank you for that, and you'll be able to read those in their entirety on our city website. We have numerous pieces of legislation that we need to approve tonight, and the first one is an ordinance regarding our sidewalk program, and Mr. Stevens?
Thank you, Mayor Duncan.
This is an ordinance to levy special assessments for the construction or reconstruction of sidewalks and appurtenances thereto in the city of Oakwood, Ohio. This ordinance is the third piece of legislation for last year's sidewalk repair project, authorizing the assessment of the sidewalk repair costs that have not already been paid directly by affected homeowners. This is the second reading of this ordinance, and I move that council adopt it tonight.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussions for Councilmember Stevens? Hearing none. Mr. Jacks, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
And Mr. Epley?
Yes.
And Mr. Stevens, I believe you have another ordinance?
An ordinance determining to proceed with the repairing of sidewalks and appurtenances thereto on Patterson Road and certain other streets between certain termini in the city of Oakwood, Ohio, providing that abutting property owners repair the same. This is an annual ordinance that is the second step of our 2020 sidewalk repair project. It was introduced with a first reading at the March 2, 2020 council meeting. This year's program will cover all streets within the area bounded by Irving Avenue, Springhouse Road, Farhills Avenue, Patterson Road, and Acorn Drive. This is also the second reading of this ordinance, and I move that council adopt it this evening.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions for Councilmember Stevens? Hearing none. Mr. Jacks, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Yes.
And Mr. Stevens, I believe you have a third ordinance?
An ordinance determining to proceed with the improvement of certain streets between certain termini in the city of Oakwood, Ohio by lighting the same with electricity. This is an annual ordinance that is the second step of our 2021 street lighting program. It was introduced with a first reading at the March 2, 2020 council meeting, and it is the ordinance that authorizes the city to proceed with the project. This is the second reading of this ordinance, and I move that council adopt it tonight.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Mr. Jacks, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Yes.
And Councilmember Stevens, I believe you have one more?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor. An ordinance levying special assessments for the improvement of certain streets between certain termini in the city of Oakwood, Ohio by lighting the same with electricity. This ordinance is the third step of our 2021 street lighting program. It allows for the costs of street lighting to be certified by the Montgomery County Auditor for Assessment. This is the first reading of this ordinance, so I make no motion at this time.
Thank you. We now have an ordinance from Vice Mayor Byington.
Yes, and I will not use the word termini or appurtenances.
[laughing]
This is an ordinance amending Section 913.06, Schedule of Rates of the Oakwood Street and Public Services Code, to enable the city stormwater utility to offer billing credits to users who mitigate stormwater runoff via the onsite retention and/or detention systems. This is an ordinance to amend the billing regulations for our stormwater management utility. It was introduced with a first reading at our March 2 council meeting. The ordinance will implement a credit system for commercial and institutional properties to be overseen by the Director of Engineering and Public Works. Under this system, owners who take steps to materially reduce stormwater runoff from commercial and institutional properties and can document the reduced impact on the city's stormwater system will be able to earn credits against their stormwater billing charges. This is the second reading of this particular ordinance, and I move that council adopt it this evening.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions for Vice Mayor Byington? Mr. Jacks, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Yes.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Byington, I believe you have another ordinance?
Yes, this is an ordinance amending Section 17-107.5, the pre-sale inspection and certificate of occupancy required for new owners and tenants. This is of the Oakwood Property Maintenance Code, and to provide for the waiver of rental inspections when a rental unit has already been inspected in the previous 12 months. This is the second reading of an ordinance to clarify the process and timing for rental unit inspections under the city's rental inspection program. It was introduced with a first reading at the March 2 council meeting. The rental inspection program requires landlords to obtain a rental unit inspection and provide certain tenant information each time there is a change of tenant. Regular inspections are important, but can be intrusive, and the need for regularity must be balanced with private property rights. For that reason, city staff has recommended that we cap the number of inspections at one per year per property unless that property has a history of complaints or other issues that warrant an inspection. Under the proposed amendment, the city would have discretion to waive the inspection requirements if all of the following three conditions are met. One, the property has already been inspected within the previous 12 months. Two, the city has not received any zoning or property maintenance complaints about the property within the previous 12 months. And three, the property owner is otherwise in compliance with all requirements of the Property Maintenance Code. This is the second reading of this ordinance, and I move that council adopt it this evening.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions for Vice Mayor Byington? Hearing none. Mr. Jacks, would you call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Yes.
And I believe you have another ordinance, Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes, I do. This is an ordinance adopting the 2021 tax budget for the city of Oakwood, Ohio, for the fiscal year beginning January 2021, to comply with Section 6.01 of the city charter. This is our annual housekeeping ordinance to estimate the city's revenues and expenses for calendar year 2021. This is the first reading of this particular ordinance, so I will make no motion at this time.
Thank you, and you have yet a fourth ordinance?
Yes. This is an ordinance levying special assessments for the purpose of acquiring, installing, equipping, and improving certain public improvements in the city of Oakwood, Ohio, in cooperation with the Dayton Regional Energy Special Improvement District, and authorizing the city manager to enter into a cooperative agreement and a special assessment agreement. Last September, council adopted an ordinance to create the Special Improvement District Assessment Fund within the city's accounting records. The purpose of the fund was to account for special assessments made in connection with projects that receive property-assessed clean energy or PACE financing. We established the fund in anticipation of receiving our first petition for the PACE-financed project in Oakwood, which we received from Beth Abram Synagogue on February 24, 2020. The proposed project is a $1.3 million high-efficiency HVAC upgrade for the synagogue. At our March 2 council meeting, council adopted two pieces of legislation to begin the process of approving Beth Abram's project, and now I am introducing the final piece. This is the ordinance that levies a special assessment against the Beth Abram property. As I've pointed out at each step of this process, PACE financing does not involve the use of city funds. Properties pursuing PACE financing in our area petition to become part of the Dayton Regional Energy Special Improvement District, Dayton Regional ESID, and loans are made by private lenders through the Dayton Port Authority. OQUA's role in the process is limited to levying the special assessment against the property. As the assessments are paid, the city will remit the proceeds to the lender to pay the loan. I make motion, in order to comply with the timing requirements for PACE financing, I move that council waive the second reading and adopt this ordinance this evening.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions for Vice Mayor Byington? Hearing none. Mr. Jacks, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
And Mr. Epley?
Yes.
And not to be outdone, you have a fifth-
Time to bring it on home. This is an ordinance to amend Section 1 of the 2020 Original Appropriation Ordinance Number 4897, to provide for the appropriation of, one, an additional amount of $400,000 to be expended from the Capital Improvement Fund to acquire and prepare real estate for a storm sewer capital project, and, two, an amount of $400,000 to be transferred from that general fund to the Capital Improvements Fund for the city of Oakwood, state of Ohio, during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2020. This is the first reading of a supplemental appropriation ordinance that will allow the city to purchase a piece of real estate that was not already included in the 2020 budget. In July of last year, the city's engineering consultant completed a study to examine stormwater drainage issues in the vicinity of Farhills and Delwood Avenue. As a result of the study, it was determined that a large reinforced concrete box culvert is in need of replacement and enlargement. Unfortunately, the culvert is located directly beneath a private residential home and cannot be accessed without compromising the structural integrity of the home. It is also impossible to relocate it elsewhere on the property due to the proximity of adjacent homes and the size of the trench that would be required to install the new culvert. The only way to address the issue is to acquire the property and raise the home. Through several work session discussions, council determined that it would be in the city's best interest to acquire the property at some point in the next one to two years to facilitate the storm sewer project. That timeline has now shortened because the property in question was recently listed for sale. Council believes it is preferable to acquire the property now, when its owners have voluntarily vacated the home, instead of waiting another year or two and potentially having to acquire it by imminent domain. The supplemental appropriation will authorize the transfer of $400,000 from the city's general fund to the Capital Improvement Fund. The money will be used to acquire the property, within excess to be applied towards the cost of demolition or otherwise preparing the property for the storm sewer capital project. I move that council waive the second reading of this and adopt this ordinance this evening.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions for Vice Mayor Byington? Hearing none. I believe this will require a fourth, fifth vote, because we're waiving the second reading, and Mr. Jacks, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Your Honor. Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes our legislation. As previously stated, we have no visitor section tonight, and we also have no staff report tonight. Do we have a city manager's report?
You, Your Honor.
Welcome.
This is probably the understatement of the year, but needless to say, we are working through some challenging times, unprecedented, of course, and much of what we do here, our local government here in the city of Oakwood, falls under the category of essential public services. And I am here tonight to report to you that we are able to, and will continue to be able to, provide those essential public services to our community. What am I talking about? I'm talking about the water, the sanitary sewer, the refuse collection and disposal, the public safety services that we provide, police fire EMS. Those six are probably in the first tier of the essential public services, and our employees here, to a person throughout each one of our departments, has really stepped up over the last few weeks to figure out how to continue to provide those services in the finest way possible, and yet still respond to this very serious situation that we're all dealing with. So, Oakwood services continue. Now, obviously, we're not doing everything that we traditionally do, but we're doing all the most important things, and I can tell you tonight that I have no reason to believe that we can't sustain this for as long as we need to. We've now done it for about three weeks, and the system is working. We have, you know, cut down the number of folks that are in any given work environment to a bare minimum. We have a number of people that are able to work from home, and that has really worked out well, to the point where you can call, if a resident calls a city phone number here through our phone system, that can automatically ring on a person's home phone that's there, say, in the morning or afternoon on duty at home, and they answer the phone call and can log onto their computer, or they're logged on and can deal with an issue. So, we're able to continue to do this, and again, I think it's sustainable for as long as it needs to be. We have facility closures, of course, and I think most people know this. The community center's been closed for about three weeks. The city building, Public Safety Building, has been closed almost that long. The Public Works Center as well. But every one of our departments, our employees are available via telephone, again, and email, and again, we're able to do a lot of work just communicating via those methods as opposed to dealing with people in person. In terms of sharing information, I would suggest to our community that the best place to go is our website. We update that every day, and just today, we posted a three-page paper, which I know you have seen, that is a very short bullet point summary of actions that we've taken here, you know, closures throughout the community in terms of the dog park, playground equipment, those sorts of things. And it's a quick read, and it's right there on the website, and again, it's updated daily as needed. We also use our Facebook account, and we use the OCC email distribution list, which has almost 2,000 Oakwood emails on that list, so we're able to communicate well with that. We've also been in communication, of course, with the Oakwood Schools and with Wright Library, and the three organizations are using each other to help spread information. So, you know, sometimes we may post something on our website for the schools or the library, and vice versa. So that works as well. In terms of activity throughout the community, I want to share one quick story. Three or four days ago, I received an email, actually, I went to the Public Works Department, from an Oakwood resident who was looking out of her window about a week ago, and she saw the street sweeper go by. And, of course, there's one operator in the street sweeper, Sean Huffman, longtime employee, and he just drove by and did his work, and she was so pleased to see that. And I think in large part, it was a symbol of normalcy to her, and she stated in her email that she always, you know, enjoys the way we maintain our streets, and the fact that we're able to continue that service was more than just clean the street, but again, it was that sense of, you know, of normalcy here. So, when we make decisions, which almost happen daily here at City Hall, as to whether we want to continue a program or keep something open or close it, we are always thinking about that. And one of these examples came up about the middle of last week, when Doug Spittler, our Public Works Director, and I talked about the monthly debris drop-off at the Fell Public Works Center. That's, you know, the first Saturday of the month, from 8 to noon, you know, should we cancel it? And Doug and I decided that we shouldn't. And, you know, based on having done that for a number of years, we know that, for the most part, citizens trickle in, one at a time, and there's no, you know, real accumulation or backlog of folks. And then Doug came up with a plan to better control the flow of traffic, so we had a whole bunch of cones out there, and, you know, just one Public Works employee monitors that operation. And I stopped in there about 10 o'clock Saturday morning, and it worked beautifully. And there were folks using it, and there had been a bunch of people already there, again, one at a time coming through and dropping off debris. So, I think that's an important thing that we try to keep going here. The annual leaf mulch program starts this Saturday, and so it runs from April 11 to May 9, the next five Saturdays. And at the moment, our plan is to operate that program, unless something dramatic would change. Again, for the folks that go to the yard to pick up mulch, they, if you've done that yourself, they typically come, you know, one at a time, and they shove a little bit of mulch, and they go back home. And we think that can work and gives people something to do, and again, a sense of normalcy. And the deliveries that we make, you know, that's one truck driver that loads it, you know, is loaded up, but they go, they dump it, and there's no interaction with residents, so we believe that's a safe thing to do. Carol Collins and her department, you know, this is, of course, prime time now to beautify, you know, all the beautification work in our community, the boulevards and the flower planting and everything, and much of that work is done individually. And, you know, we're, of course, making special effort now to have employees drive in separate vehicles to a work site and then kind of work independently, but again, it fits pretty well with that normal operation anyway. So, our citizens will see folks out there doing that kind of normal work. And then finally, we have some construction projects, of course, you know, roadway, sidewalk, curb, and that sort of thing, our traditional annual programs. While we don't have any start dates for those projects at the moment, they've all been bid, and we have contractors lined up, and, you know, we will, at this point, plan to, again, carefully manage, have these projects unfold as best we can. I will, my final comment tonight, say that on the sidewalk repair program, we did delay by four weeks the delivery of the notices to the affected property owners, and, of course, that pushes back by four weeks the start of that actual concrete sidewalk work. So that change was made, but aside from that, the rest of the work we expect will begin as soon as contractors are ready, and we will work very closely with the contractors to make sure that they, in terms of their own employees, adhere to the social distancing requirements, et cetera, et cetera. So, those are my comments for this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for our city manager?
No.
Thank you for your concise report. That now takes us to council comments. Councilmember Epley?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have no comments tonight.
Councilmember Hilton?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to encourage people, we do this during the holidays, I think Mr. Byington's the star of doing this, but to buy locally, there's a ton of stuff still open in the Business District downtown, and then in my little, the one near my neighborhood. I talked to Teresa today, she's opening up the bakery again tomorrow. And up north, you know, TR's open and the sandwich shop, but there's a lot of stuff, and you might have to take it in your car, but anyway, I encourage people to do that.
Very good. I've been to Flyboys three times, I'm running out of giving them $20 bills for a sandwich.
[laughing]
Councilmember Stevens?
Thank you, Mayor Duncan. Just the, I want to reiterate something that a lot of people saw. A couple weeks ago, we put out the Oakwood Neighbor Proclamation, where we are, we copied this, you know, we don't want to take full credit, we copied this from the Village of Yellow Springs. Literally, it's a way to get out of the house, stand on your front porch, out in your front yard, and just socialize from a distance with your neighbors. You know, the six o'clock wave, send a greeting, you might be seeing them throughout the day as well, but it's kind of a time for us all to come together, and we're trying to pass that word and get it out to do that. And at the same time, we're asking that you check on your neighbors, especially any senior citizens that might live nearby you, where you can check on them. You know, we have found, we've talked about doing different projects here to support that demographic group, but the hard part is getting people to accept help sometimes, and, you know, if it's on a one-on-one situation where you know the people, we think you'd have a better chance of helping someone out. Everybody, you know, has different obstacles in this time. No one is, you know, this is not perfect for anyone, this is, there's no one that has it the hardest. Everybody is being hit in some way by this, some worse than others. So we just ask that you ask your neighbors and your friends if they need anything, because a little bit can go a long way. So, we will continue to do the six o'clock wave, the Oakwood Neighbor Proclamation until- So the, we will continue to do the six o'clock wave, the Oakwood Neighbor Proclamation until the quarantine is lifted. So we just encourage you to spread that word and help out your neighbors as much as you can. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Byington?
Yeah, just two quick comments. One, to build on what Norv was talking about, I just wanted to commend city staff, I want to really make sure that we conveyed to all those folks how important it is really for us to see the sense of normalcy. As somebody who's been working from home and sitting in my front window, my desk and my laptop, and all day long, I get to see the Oakwood Police go by, I get to see the maintenance crews go by in their trucks hauling debris off to the dump, I get to see the scooters going through the neighborhood. So I realize how important it is to see those kind of things and just how great a job everybody's doing, so make sure you pass that along to them. And then building on what Mrs. Hilton said, I encourage everybody to buy local as much as possible, it's really difficult for a lot of businesses. And if you don't feel comfortable going for pickup or carryout or those kind of things, a lot of places are doing gift cards. I know my wife and I now have a stack of about like this, and when this whole thing is over, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be like a card shark with all kinds of gift cards. But support local business as much as you possibly can. It's tough times.
Very good. Thank you. We received, you know, a good recommendation from one of our citizens who thought it would be a great idea to hang our American flags in the median there on Far Hills. And Joe Hicks, I believe, was his name. And I want to thank him publicly for that idea. We've received nothing but great comments about that, and we're going to continue to keep those flags up as long as our national and state emergency is in existence. And then, secondly, our local UPS driver, and his name is Eric Hainlein, he had an idea that he wanted, could we do some sort of a community prayer? And I said, well, since the governor sort of has a stay-at-home order out, that probably wasn't appropriate. But I asked him, if you would write a prayer, you know, for our city and country, I would be happy to close our meeting tonight with that prayer. And so I would ask all of you to prepare yourself for prayer, and I will read this prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for gathering us here tonight. We thank you for the opportunity to be able to manage the business of the great city of Oakwood tonight. We humbly ask that you guide us according to your will as we go through these uneasy times in our state and nation. Grant wisdom to elected officials that are entrusted to make the necessary decisions for our towns, our state, and our nation. As we go through uneasy and uncertain times, we don't want you to be our last resort, we want you to be first in our hearts and minds. You are the one that brings healing to you, and you are the one that brings peace. Our nation has been blessed ever since it has been founded, and it says in your word that if the people who are called by your name will humble themselves and pray, you will hear us and bring healing. The two common enemies we face right now are a virus and a fear of it. It also says in your word that no weapon formed against us shall prosper. Move in your power and bring much-needed peace and a stop to this virus. As we have just had Palm Sunday, like the people of Israel shouted praises to you and exalted you, we do the same. Let us not hold back our hallelujah, and we give glory and honor to the King of Kings. Rest upon us, and let Oakwood be a shining light to the Miami Valley, Ohio, and this nation. Let us be a people united in peace and harmony, and let it be done not because of who we are, but because of who you are. We praise you and thank you, and we pray in your name, the mighty name of Jesus, amen. Our next meeting is going to be on Monday, May 4, and with God's help and the governor of the state of Ohio's help, we will be an open-for-business country again. Thank you for watching.